... Building Ordnance. There are three buildings about to fall down. Rose told you about the one on East Lincoln and Railroad. Estela's Cafe is about to fall down on Bridge Street. Across the street is the Fram Building. It used to be the Central Meat Market. It's between El Rialto Restaurant and B3 BBQ. Half of the roof is gone. It's collapsed into the floor. The floor has collapsed. We're going to have two more breezeways on Bridge Street soon. And these beautiful buildings that were built by founders of Las Vegas are going to collapse. So, thank you Levi and Main Street Labs, this ordinance and the enforcement.
I got you on Zoom.
Also here, Main Street Contract is on your... To approve its bill for $35,000.
Connected to Comcast.
Cash and $5,000 for office space. Main Street has already brought in $90,000 to benefit the city of Las Vegas so far this year. So, the return on your money is extremely good. I want to thank Robert Archuleta. I don't know how we would have gotten through this last year with different personnel changes with the city without Robert. Chief Montoya with our VoteYourMainStreet.org campaign has been incredible as has Veronica Gentry, Virginia Maruho. So, thank you for supporting this effort. We're number six so far in this national campaign. We're the smallest town in the competition and we're doing really well. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Don't see Alan Hafeld? Thomas Clayton?
Madam Mayor, Councilor, Chief. First, I want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity. It's been a while since I've had to speak before, Mayor and Council. I think the last time I was here was getting PTSD kind of memories. It's been a while, but so bear with me, Madam Mayor. I'm here in support of the issue of the buildings. I think the ordinance is being drafted. I think my couple of my concerns are, as many of you know, my wife and I and my family are investing in the neighborhood I grew up in, Railroad Avenue. And it is a fabulous neighborhood and I just see it flourishing. My concern is that buildings that have some historic significance are being neglected. And I will be the first to admit, the building that my wife and I are investing in was one of those buildings. It was literally, if not months, weeks from destruction by the weather. You know, we pray for rain all the time and if we would have gotten the rains that we got this year, two years ago, that building would have been demolished. My family was blessed to have, quote-unquote, "the drought" because it didn't destroy my building. But these buildings, so I'm concerned that the property owners, that we give them the due respect that they need, but that they address the buildings that they have. I don't know, these three buildings that Cindy talked about, I know the buildings themselves. I don't know the property owners. I don't know their circumstances. But I do believe that the history we have in this community is what sells this community, the people here. And we can sell Railroad Avenue. I think the investment that's going in there by Mr. Hafeld, my wife and I are investing literally lock, stock, and barrel in that building. And it's because it has some personal attachment. I grew up just a few blocks north of there and I spent time with my aunt, my uncle, and my grandmother's building. And so, whatever you can do to help that, help property owners and the community restore some of these buildings, I'm not asking for your money. What I'm asking is for the resources to be put into motivate property owners to do that. As I was talking to some of the, to Rose and Bill here and Cindy, we were talking about, we were talking about great ideas happen, but it really is when they get implemented is the problem. And so, it's a commitment of resources and a commitment of staff and that it be applied equally to everybody. So that no one, property owner, whether that's Mr. Larson who owns that building on Railroad, is thought, "I'm being singled out." Or the owners of Estela's. I mean, I don't think there's anybody that has lived in Las Vegas that hasn't had lunch or had lunch in Estela's and remembers the wonderful meals there. We've got to help these owners. But I'm in support of doing something because if we do nothing, they will fall and they will become breezeways. So, that's kind of where I'm at. I want to thank the city for the support you guys have shown with respect to my building and my project. And so, I just want to thank the Mayor and Council in all your staff because it's been a good ride and so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Could you mind if I just showed you the photograph or have you seen it?
What I'd like for you to do is get a copy of that photograph and you can give that to our clerk and she will get it up to the council. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's it for public input. So, these are all discussion items. Resolution 17-37, City of Las Vegas Metal City Express intend to apply for the Mexico DOT grant 5311. Pam and Victoria are here to present.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilors. I'm here with Victoria Benavida. She's our transportation manager. And we're here to present Resolution 17-37, which is the City of Las Vegas is intent to match grant funds that we apply for on an annual basis. This is actually for the fiscal year 2019 grant that we're applying for. We currently got, we received approval of the fiscal year 18 grant, so this is for the 19 grant. But this is an annual process that we do. We bring the resolution to council every year to get approval of the matching funds and we'll send for any questions Cindy has.
Okay, questions, comments? Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Maru, the funds were not extended, right? The same, the grant funds would be the same amount as last time?
That's correct.
So, therefore, that we are not able to extend the hours of operation?
That's correct. At this time, Madam Mayor and Council, at this time, we cannot extend the hours because we don't have budget to do that.
That's right.
But this is exactly the match that we received this fiscal year as well or that we are going to be intending to utilize.
Would there ever be an opportunity to ask for more funds?
There is. Every year, we can ask for more funds. It just depends on what the state can grant us. At this point in time, this matches what the state can grant us. But in the future, if we do some planning, we've looked into a planning grant to expand services to outside of the city limits. Right now, we're just operating inside city limits. It'll take a little bit of collaboration probably with the county in different areas to make that happen because we'll need some grant funds, matching funds from the county or different entities to do that. But it's something that we can definitely look into in the future.
I just want to compliment the Transportation Department that they really helped my guest that was staying at our house. And they picked her up and took her to school and on time. She really appreciated. Thank you.
Counselor, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How much is the DOT grant for? What is their part of the...
There's three separate sections of the grant, of the DOT grant that we have with transportation. We have an admin portion where the state pays 80% and the city pays 20%. And then, we have the operational fund, which is our drivers and our operational expenses. And that's split 50/50. And then, we have the capital side where we purchase our vehicles and that's at an 80/20 split with the city paying 20% and the state paying 8%.
And so, what is this one?
This is, this covers the match for all three sections.
All three of them?
Yeah.
Okay, so it'll be to be done, okay?
Yes.
And where will the money for the match come from?
It'll come from the general fund.
That's all, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And everybody's clear that if the money comes in to transportation, it's going to be divided in certain line items, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I want to make sure this council, if you can, so. Okay, so any other questions? Might it be pleasure of the council?
Consensus.
Consensus. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Next item is review and clarification of 2017 fixed assets inventory.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Trujillo. In front of you, we have the review and the certification of the fixed assets and inventories for the City of Las Vegas as of June 30, 2017. The fixed assets in total net of depreciation for the entire City of Las Vegas is $57,888,078. Total dispositions last year went up to $1,569,000. And our inventories as of June 30, 2017 was $446,569. And with that, I'll entertain any questions?
Questions?
Madam Mayor? Thank you. All of my questions are based on the fact that I had trouble understanding what some of those things meant.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll give you, for example, on page one of the governmental funds under 01320 Municipal, I'm sorry, Museum and Municipal Judge Building. And the beginning year cost asset was $886,733.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, the adjusted cost is the same thing. And then, the prior accumulated depreciation is the same thing. And so, net asset value, is that at this point in time is all zero? Can you explain that?
That's because all the depreciation has already been taken care of. It's an older building that we have. And so, we, all the depreciation, it's over, I believe it's a 20-year period on buildings, Counselor Casey, and so, it's been fully depreciated.
Okay. That helps me a lot and that eliminates like about 80% of my questions.
I'm sorry, yes. And that's why I said it was made of depreciation because we depreciate our buildings on an annual basis. I think equipment is five years, buildings is 20 years, and I believe heavy-duty equipment is another 10 years.
Okay. So, then the, all of the numbers listed on that last column, if they're zeroed out is because they can't be depreciated anymore?
They've been fully, yes, they've been fully depreciated.
Okay. And then, on some of the other pages, we have properties that were, it says, acquired in 1900. Is that just a standard number that's used because we're not quite sure that we have things like the, you know, the Plaza Park and Carnegie Park and other areas like that?
We had a company come in and do all the research as far as the titles and the property values and all of those issues. We had a company come in. We've incorporated all of those into all of our fixed assets and tried to incorporate our properties as well. If they didn't find the actual year that it was in fact belonged to the City of Las Vegas, then they had to, then they either went back or they went back as far as they could and the 1900 would probably be something that they were unable to clarify anymore with more specificity. However, that goes. I'm not sure what the word is, but anyway, yes.
Okay. And there was on page 39, 35 laptops that were all purchased at the same time. I was just really curious where all those went to. Let me just...
Page 35?
39. Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me see what...
These were all Dell laptops.
They could have been, I'm looking at it, they could have been the Dell laptops at the time that we went into the Tyler system. We ended up having to purchase the new Dell laptop computers for our system. And so, and we've been re, we've been re, what is it, repurchasing the computers as we, as they fail or as we have to, we make, after we, if they fail or if we have to replace them, they will replace the Dell. That's what we're using currently, Counselor.
And another question that I had that, this one is just purely out of my own curiosity.
Yes, ma'am.
This is all the mayor's department.
Solid Waste.
Page three, yeah, we have an unidentified vehicle acquired in 2012 and it still has a net value of $3,713.64. How was that number reached if the vehicle isn't, is unidentified?
Is that the loading tunnel repair? Is that the last, is that the last item on the first section?
Let me see.
It's $3,580?
It's $3,713.64. It's on page three.
Yes, I see it. And that I don't know. I will have to get back to you.
Do they usually use the blue book value?
That as well as with the depreciation. And so, if it hasn't been fully depreciated and we purchased, acquired date was June 30, 2012. And so, what I'll have to do is go back to the, go back to the title and see what it actually is. But I can get back to you.
I was just curious if it was not identified, how could, how would you know what the value is if you don't know what it is?
We have the value and then we depreciate it. But I will find out what the actual piece of equipment is.
Okay. And did you get that, excuse me, could you get that response to the entire governing body?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that those are all my questions. Like I said, with your first answer, that took care of all the others that I had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I do want to say thank you because I know that I've had to do inventory myself in other jobs and I hated every second of it. And so, I appreciate the work that went into this document. I think it was a lot of hard work. It was probably not just your part, but a whole lot of other people that worked with you. And so, please extend my thank you to them for the work that they did because it's an awesome piece of work, very thorough and very complete and...
Thank you, Counselor.
Michelle. Any other questions? Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Gagos, good evening.
Good evening.
Is community development an asset? I mean, it's on here.
It's probably an asset.
Is it the building or, it's on, I guess, the first page?
Is it the first page?
Yeah. It's community development.
That's a community development building.
It's the building?
Yes.
Okay. I was wondering.
Yes.
Construction services, is that the construction of each of the items that are, that were listed in here?
Construction services, yes, sir. And it's, and some of it could be construction in progress that is still, hasn't still been fully started to be depreciated because it's still, the project hasn't been completed yet.
There are some food cooking equipment here.
Yes, sir.
Is that with the senior citizens?
Yes, sir.
Building?
Yes, sir.
And did we not put in new equipment there?
We did put new equipment there and we have replaced some of the equipment. We replaced some of the equipment and I believe there's some, Mr. Trujillo?
Stored.
That's in storage, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is the new equipment listed here?
Yes, sir. Yes, if it was, and that was, that project was completed last year, so it would have been, it would have been listed as part of the, as part of the new building with senior centers. Okay. Are you looking at a specific page, Counselor Hall?
The page listing here is very light in colors. I wasn't able to...
Okay.
That's okay, as long as I know that it's...
I think it's page four.
Is it page four?
Yes.
I can look at it.
Actually, I am right in the middle of this bar. I can't see the...
Hello, is that the new construction of 2016?
Yes, sir.
If you look at the date right next to the title, it'll give you the date when that building was either remodeled or...
Completed.
I think it says 2016.
Okay.
The senior center building?
As long as it's, I know that it's in the senior center.
Yes, sir.
I'm just looking at way back, way below that. It says 2013, 2012.
Right.
Food warmers and convection ovens, those are still in the center or are they taken away because we got new equipment?
Yeah, some of that is in storage.
In storage?
Yeah.
But it's still listed under the inventory list, correct?
It's still an asset.
It's still an asset for the city and a lot of times it'll happen as other centers will request some of that equipment and so, it'll come back to Mayor and Council for transfer if it's back, someone else can utilize it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I was reading what you...
Fully disposed assets, you have another item. Are these all items that you save or, you know?
The fully disposed assets are the assets that we sold or that were, that were sold last year as obsolete materials? Yes, sir.
Because you have a lot of pages.
And we got quite, we got, we sold quite a few of the older vehicles. The police department had a, I'm not sure how many vehicles they had at the airport. We had, we ended up being able to sell those and for salvageable, for salvageable amounts. We also had quite a few computers, older computers that we had a company come in and pick them up. And so, we did quite a bit of cleaning last year.
Madam Mayor, may I do one more question, please? Yes. Thank you. When something can no longer be depreciated, how long does it stay on the asset list before it's sold at auction?
If something is fully depreciated and we're still utilizing the asset, it just remains there? Now, if we're not, if we're not utilizing it, then it, then the department will come in, let us know that they're no longer using the item and then we'll put it up for auction. Thank you.
We will be going, Counselor.
All these items that you build, that you have, the equipment, are these in different areas or...
We do. We keep them. Each department holds their assets until we're ready to sell them. But we usually come to Mayor and Council with a listing of all of the items that we want permission to sell. And we'll bring it back to Mayor and Council and then we'll get them and we'll put them up for auction either online or if, with the vehicles, we had someone come in and give us an estimate or they would give us for those vehicles that were no longer in operation.
So, when they dispose of vehicles, that it's going to come back to us before you?
Yes, sir.
Because three months ago, we disposed of some vehicles, they never came to us.
I believe that we did and we, what we did was we sent that listing. And I do have a copy of the listing. I can get that to Mayor and Council. But we did have a listing that went to, there was a resolution that came in for obsolete materials. If it's under $5,000, then it doesn't go to the state and I have that information. But I did have a listing of the vehicles that were, the vehicles as well as other items that were, that were sold.
So, like anything else, like say, I am like metals, you know, or equipment that's, do you keep track of that or how do you?
We do. We, as a matter of fact, we had quite a bit of metal at the recreation center, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. Yeah, we had converters, we had cores, radiator cores, and all that was sold.
And I don't know...
And it's all inventoried.
And sometimes it's hard to even have, get someone to come in and look at it and give us a price for it. But I guess with metal, it's by the, so by the pound, I believe, is what it is. And so, we get someone to give us an estimate and the one who really helped us out was Alvin Hidon from Solid Waste. He knows a lot of the people that would come in and Solid Waste Department comes in and they will look at some of the items that we have available to sell. But we did get rid of quite a few items last year that I can, that I can remember.
Thank you, Madam.
Ms. Gagos?
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I want to thank you for your continued dedication to the City of Las Vegas and all the work that you do for the city and putting together this inventory list. I know it takes quite a bit of time. On the disposal of equipment, do you have a competitive process where they bid on this equipment?
We do. And it's sometimes, Mayor, Councilors, it's hard to find anyone who will take the equipment, like the old computers. There's things that you have to do. There's a process that you have to follow, get to pull out the hard drives. There's so many things that you have, you have to make sure that aren't there. We would have, there's a company, I believe, in Albuquerque that'll come in in bulk and take them. But we need to wrap them, have them ready for them, and then they'll come in and take them and dispose of them. So, but we do try to get a competitive, somebody that's competing either for the, some of the metal or some of the other issues and, you know, that, that I'll defer over to the city manager because I think he helped us with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Trujillo? So, we're going to continue looking for competitive bids. We're not finished. There's a lot of vehicles and trucks that we need to do something with. And so, there's going to be a second round of this. What you saw were some of the vehicles that were kept at the airport and we got a notice that we had to remove them. So, we took care of those, those vehicles. But we have several vehicles that need to be salvaged. So, I know the county is going to do a, an auction and we're going to try to hopefully join them with that auction and let's see how we do with that.
Okay, so when you said the airport vehicles were addressed, how were they addressed?
So, staff went ahead and they removed a lot of the cores and the catalytic converters and that, put that aside. And then, the cars were picked up by the scrap company on Railroad. So, that's how we disposed of that.
Okay, so was that competitive then?
Well, we thought it was a pretty good price. Instead of transporting them all the way to Albuquerque, we felt it was a good, good price.
We tried to sell, what we did is we tried to sell items that were converters and all those other things. We tried to sell them separately. I don't remember what we made, but we, they did bring in some money for those. And then, we also sold the vehicles. What'll happen this time around is we'll bring you the, a resolution requesting permission to sell obsolete equipment with a listing attached to it. And that'll be, hopefully, they'll come in in November and order sent to Mayor and Council. And that way, we can start that second round. But the city manager would like to...
Yes, and one of the issues I discussed with the city manager is that I received a lot of calls about the disposition of the equipment. And a lot of constituents want actual auctions so they can have an opportunity to bid. I know some of the vehicles are very old, but they want them because they are old, you know. But I also want to turn over the floor at this point in time to Counselor Lee on the actual disposition of vehicles and when they, I know you had informed me because that's your field of expertise, when you actually get a vehicle and you tear apart the vehicle and the value of the vehicle, could you explain to the council?
The thing is, is, you know, you know, I'm in the same business, capital practice.
Yes, sir.
And there's laws, there's laws, you know. You can't, you buy, you buy a vehicle, you can't dispose of the vehicle in the second, third day, you know, because there's laws on it. If you do, you get cited by the state, whatever, you know. And when, when you guys sold a stock vehicle, this guy's disposed of his vehicles right away, you know. These guys could have run into trouble so fast, you know, but it never happened, you know, nobody went to them. But I think it was unfair for, for, for doing what you, the way you guys do, I don't know how you guys do it. You know, you never came to a council, you never, you know, just came because you had the vehicle and you were going to get cited because of that. But, you know, you go by tonnage, you know, and there's, they pay by tonnage, you know, capital scraps, they were, and it's I do Albuquerque, Santa Fe, you know. But, you know, the thing is that some of those vehicles can be, you know, my company buys them or capital scrap, whatever they do, you know, making money from the opportunities, you know, but, you know, there's, there's some things that I'm concerned about that.
And Madam Mayor and members of the council, Counselor Gilavari did, did talk to me. I did keep record of everything. We do have a binder. We know exactly what was taken, what we salvaged. But he brought up a lot of good points for, for the next time that we do this is follow a process. And I, I appreciate all the guidance, the guidance that Counselor Gilavari is going to give us the next time we move forward with this.
And there'll be other opportunities and most certainly, we will, we will tap you for more information. In my opinion, I thought it was very difficult to get rid of the vehicles. Apparently not, but I'm not in the, I'm not in that kind of business. And so, I was, I was glad that we were able... And so I was glad that we were able to get rid of some of those obsolete materials. Not only the vehicles, but the other items that we had in storage. And so we'll certainly look towards you and have you help us, assist us in some of those. And the auctions, we've done online auctions, which is something that we can go back to doing. We'll do an online auction, let people know, advertise it and let people know that these items are in fact available.
Yeah, okay. Excuse me.
But the past years, you would bring, you didn't do the online auction. You did, you just brought your vehicles into.
We did. We used to put them up on the yard. Because I remember doing that as well.
Because there's a lot of citizens here that liked coming here, you know. You know, they could do it online too, you know. But, you know, they like to see the vehicles and see what they have and have the auctions out here. That, you know, that's a good idea because it then helps the people that don't have cars or they want to buy a car and they can fix it or a panel or whatever they can, you know. But when we start, when you guys start doing that, maybe I can give you guys some ideas and we can vote.
Thank you.
We can, most certainly. Counselor Howell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Gagos, where does the money, the revenues go when we get, you know, sell the equipment or sell the salvage cars?
Depending on, depending, I'm sorry, Counselor Howell.
Yes.
If you mean to interrupt you.
No.
Depending on where it was paid from. If it was from utilities and it goes back to utilities, it was paid from the general fund, it goes back to the general fund as miscellaneous income.
Okay, and so the police cars would go to the?
General.
To miss, to the general fund.
Not the police.
General fund.
Okay, which is the police.
And then the utilities or housing. I know that we sold a van for transportation. And it was, that was also, the transportation department wanted to see those revenues as well. And that would go directly to the transportation.
Thank you.
Are we clear on where the funding will go? If one sells cars or vehicles are sold. I'm asking the government.
Yeah, just explain.
On the record, what happens to money? Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
Consent.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Madam Councilor.
Thank you. Next item is the publication of ordinance 17-08, amending the municipal code by adding chapter 302 titled Repair, Closing, Demolition of Dwelling Unfit for Human Habituation. And Levi will present.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors, Mr. Manager. I'm here tonight to discuss the ordinance proposed. Chapter 302, answer any questions or discussions that you might have. This ordinance was drafted to coincide with state statute 346-43. It's titled Urban Development. That statute gives the municipality or code enforcement, the enforcement powers to enforce coinciding with the state on dilapidated structures or dwellings unfit for human habitation. With this ordinance, it will enforce on defects increasing the hazards of fire accidents and calamities, lack of adequate ventilation, light or sanitary facilities, dilapidation, disrepair, structural defects, overcrowding, inadequate ingress and egress, and inadequate drainage. I've dealt with a few cases here in town and a lot of the buildings that the citizens here from public input, this ordinance would help enforce on it. And with buildings being in the historic district, there's some concern of properties being torn down. With this ordinance, it would coincide with municipal code in the historic buildings. With this ordinance, I can either have them repair, alter, or remove the structure. It doesn't always have to be to remove or demolish. We could ask them to improve it or to secure it until the proper funds come in for them to fix it adequately to open it back up. With this ordinance, I see that it'd make the city of Las Vegas flourish again. We have a lot of vacant buildings here in town. And what this ordinance is going to do is hopefully it'll promote people to, instead of boarding up their building how our vacant building ordinance states right now, and just buy a permit for it. We're asking for them to make it habitable and possibly rent it or sell it so people start coming to Las Vegas and living here again. Do you guys have any questions or concerns?
Questions? Counselor Ulay.
Madam Mayor. Mr. Ron, this is applied to residents too?
It will. Like as far as structural defects affecting safety or health concerns, I've gone to some cases to where I've seen people living in 10 by 10 structures that someone just created to make a little income. I've seen people living in places where their refrigerator is right next to their bathroom. And that's inadequate, sanitary facilities, improper ventilation. We have people living in the sheds that they sell across the street. We've seen deaths happen from those. This ordinance will help us enforce to make sure that dwellings like that aren't being set up, putting people's lives in risk.
And is that applied to model homes too?
Yes, this, there'd be no limitations to this ordinance. As far as residential goes, I always like to stick to the nuisance ordinance. It gives them the due process as well as this one. But it gives them the due process to correct the violation. And with this ordinance, I'm more so looking at the vacant buildings and getting the community back up, not, in a sense, kicking residents out of their house because they don't have the proper conditions to live there. I'd like to help them to get that rather than take this route on this ordinance.
Counselor Howell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Luhon, can you provide us a sample timeline on, let's say you've addressed a building that needs your attention to this ordinance? How long, you know, from the start to the finish? To get it appropriately?
It could be anywhere from one month to the maximum of two months with this ordinance. How it states in 302-6, the contents of the notice, I would set up a, the code enforcement officer or the officers designated agent at a place fixed in the complaint, not less than 10 days nor more than 30 days. With this, I would make them aware of the violations that were present on the property and give them the options, how I had stated, either to repair, alter, or improve the dwelling. Or if it was too far dilapidated or unrestorable, that it could be removed or demolished. At this point, of course, they're given the opportunity to appeal it to district court following state statute. So if they were to do that, the process could be extended until district court were to give a ruling on it. But with this ordinance itself, it wouldn't extend any further than 30 days.
Have you looked into how long it would take the owner to get a contractor and how long the contractor would be able to get it completed?
As long as.
Because 30 days seems very short.
Yeah, with this ordinance, as long, the first due process is given with a 10 to 30 day notice. And they're able to come back to the code enforcement officer and give recommendations or what their action plan is going to be to fix the structure. At that point, we're always open to due process. We're looking for self-compliance more than to take over the property.
And if it isn't completed by the time that you guys agreed upon?
At that point, the city would be able to move forward with repairing the structure or demolishing the structure, whatever was necessary to evade the nuisance. And at that point, the city would follow a lien process, filing a lien on the property.
So the city would take over at that point? Is that what you're saying?
We wouldn't take over the property. We're not really wanting to take over properties because then it becomes us having to maintain them. What we would do is we would file a lien on the property and the lien would stay held on the property until it was foreclosed on.
So it is a long process. It's not, it's not just within 30 days that it's going to get done.
As far as abating the nuisance or the hazard on the property, that would be the shorter process. As far as the legality and collecting the funds after is when the city attorney would be involved in collecting on the.
In developing this ordinance, how did you do? How much, oh, excuse me. Where did, did you get any input from the community?
I got a lot of.
Business owners and?
I got a lot. I got a lot of people coming in interested in it. I met with the Housing Advisory Committee who, there was a lot of people here. The president from Highlands was concerned as well how this ordinance will enforce on the overcrowding. We have a lot of people from the colleges here in town coming in. And we have eight or nine college students living in a two-bedroom apartment or a building that they built in the back of their house so that they could stay in. They're seeing a lot of concerns with that. And the cost of living here in Las Vegas to find a house, when I was at the advisory meeting, was a concern to them. And if we could get a lot of these vacant buildings back up and going again, I think there'd be more buildings so the cost could possibly go down.
So they're very positive about?
Yes.
Us pursuing this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a couple of questions on the language itself that's in the ordinance. On page one, item number three, line two. No, I'm sorry. Item A, it's at line two. The governing body with the adoption of this chapter hereby appoints the code enforcement officer to exercise powers as may be necessary or convenient. What does that mean, or convenient?
That part of the chapter right there was directly taken from the state statute that allowed the code enforcement officer to do this. I see where convenient could be an issue.
Excuse me, I'd like to defer that question to Corina.
That language does come directly from state statute. Part of, I was asked early on in coming on board at the city to look into the policies and procedures in place in Albuquerque with the, I think it's called the Safe Cities Strike Task Force or Strike Force. And so what they've done is they've adopted an administrative procedure under the authority of their state statute, which requires the adoption of ordinance. And so that can, an administrative procedure can allow things to progress a little bit more informally, get the homeowner in within 10 days to support enforcement to look at the issues with the dwelling, the costs of repair or demolition. I guess on the other side of it, it takes, because we do have the dangerous buildings ordinance. And those go before you in the form of a resolution. And then your decision is, again, appealable to district court. So it does have that other side to it. Takes it a little bit less out of the governing body and more towards the administrative process that then would be appealable to district court. So that convenient language is something that is just in the state statute. And it kind of goes along with those administrative procedures in general. But it could be something that, that could be amended before publication by which the governing body.
You know, I'm fine with state statute, but just because it's a statute doesn't mean that it's the right thing.
I think.
And so I do have a problem with the word convenient. And I would like to see it, if it's going to remain in the ordinance, then we should have perhaps a section that has definitions for terms such as convenient. Because convenient can mean anything. And I worry because although we have a really wonderful code enforcement officer now, eight, 10 years from now, we may not have one that's so great and might just do things willy-nilly using that word convenient as a means of doing what he or she wants.
Well, maybe what we can do is add the definition of convenient. But I don't believe that we can change the state statute unless we go back to.
No, we can't, we can't change state statutes. And that's not what I'm saying. But I'm saying we can change the language in the ordinance.
But it has to be consistent with the state statute. Does that work for you?
The state statute authorizes this process for four municipalities that find first off that these conditions exist. But it does not dictate the precise language.
Right.
So some modification. And in fact, I wanted to, if, are you done, Counselor?
No, I'm not.
Okay, I had also suggested place where some language should be considered during these discussions.
The other two are on that same page, items four and five. The language says, "To appoint and fix the duties of any officers, agents, and employees as the code enforcement officer deems necessary and to delegate any functions and powers under the ordinance to officers, agents, and employees." Can we have somewhere also a definition for officers, agents, and employees so that we know exactly who will be doing what? I think it's important to know who is an agent, a real estate agent, you know, what kind of an agent is going to be doing this, or an officer. What kind, does it have to be a law enforcement officer? Can it be, you know, a sheriff or what exactly does that mean? I don't have a problem with the language other than it's not really clear as to who these people are. Then on page two, give me a second to get that on my computer here. Page two, line two. Okay, and it says, "In the interest of the municipality and its inhabitants, it is necessary to prohibit." I'm sorry, under A, line two. "Any and all conditions that the code enforcement officer finds to determine a dwelling to be unfit for human habitation shall directly show the dangerous and injurious conditions present to the health, safety, and morals of the public." You cannot legislate morality. So I have a problem with the word morals being included there. We can't tell people what they can and can't do in their house unless they're breaking the law. And it's not illegal to be immoral. It's not the greatest thing on earth, but it's not illegal. And so I think that we need to remove the words "and moral" and just leave it at, you know, "dangerous, injurious conditions present to the health and safety of the public" instead of including morals in that particular section. My last one is, I too was concerned, is Counselor Howell, about language for, that would ensure that property owners have some kind of rights. And so can we add just a little addendum at the end of the ordinance saying that property rights for owners are included in the nuisance ordinance and give the number for that ordinance on there so that they know that they can resort to something and not just freak out with this and say, oh my God, I don't have any rights on my own property. What can I do? And if you can add that, I think it would strengthen the ordinance. And that way people know that they have recourse. You know, if they're red tagged, they can talk to Levi, work it out to get it fixed or, you know, board it up so that it's not a danger to anybody or whatever needs to be done. I would like to see that also included. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I too was very concerned about this ordinance, as you well know. And I had a lot of concerns. But I was assured that this was discussed and worked on with the city attorney as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So these are things that should have been looked into prior to bringing in it. This are concerns I had with the city manager and also with you, Mr. Luhon. The concerns of the residential homes and the living conditions, I think that we have to take a look at that. Also, I understand your concern. And was the issue of dilapidated buildings, that was your biggest push. And I understand that as well. But I did have the same concerns or more about this. So I, I'm not certain if at this point in time it would be in our best interest to move forward with this until maybe we take a better look at it. And maybe we bring it back. Let me finish. And then once we do that, then, you know, address all the concerns of the council. Maybe we should take it out of the public book because there are a lot of concerns that I've had personally on this one again. And the council has concerns, valid concerns, I believe, one, again. And the council has concerns, valid concerns, I believe, about this ordinance that could adversely impact a lot of residential homes, and I'm very concerned about that. Hold on. Did you have a question?
A comment.
The, I know that you're already busy in what your job title is supposed to be doing. Now that you're going to be doing this also, in other words, you're going to be enforcing this a lot more aggressively, are you going to have enough staff to do it? Because one person is going to be very difficult to do what he's doing now and then also pursuing all of the buildings that are, structures that are not appropriate. Mr. Manager?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, anytime you have a new ordinance, it's very important that the public fully understands what we're going to try to enforce. And I like to make a recommendation, because the city of Albuquerque, back 20 years ago, their code enforcement officers and agents and everybody that's involved with abatements of buildings in Albuquerque came to the city of Las Vegas. Not only did they come to the city of Las Vegas to talk to the code enforcement, but they drove around town as to some of the areas of example of what we could do. And back then, it was said that state statute would supersede your ordinances. And they did talk about this state statute. And I'd like to recommend that possibly bring them back to present, maybe to Mayor and Council, to ask the questions that you want to ask as far as agents and buildings and mobile homes and stuff like that, so that we get a better understanding of that. The other thing, you talked about staff, we're looking at bringing onboard, not only in the fire department as a fire inspector, but we're also going to start looking at a building inspector for the city of Las Vegas, because they're going to have to help the code enforcement with how to identify a lot of these buildings and what we do with it. So we're also looking at that. But I think it'd be important for us to get a real good handle and probably have maybe some public input out in the community to talk about that, but be prepared for a lot of the questions before we initiate a ordinance like this. We have to, as a city, and I'm glad we're doing it, I did tell Levi, I'm glad we're moving in that direction, because we are losing buildings, and we don't have owners that are willing to fix those buildings, or they might not even be able to afford it. And maybe as a city and as a community, maybe we could help them identify funding for working on their buildings. So there's a lot that goes into this, and it's not one of these that we're just going to slap in with an ordinance and say, "Well, you have all these violations." I think it's going to take a lot to educate the community. And that's what I like to do from here on out. So I understand that you have more questions, and it's not something that we need to push through, and I would like to have more time with our code enforcement and our attorney, and possibly the people in Albuquerque, to look at what we're doing and seeing what they do. And maybe we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
So what would the timeline be?
Hopefully, in a couple of months, we could come back with something that, something that we could approve. But I know this is tough. This ordinance, if you read it, it is tough. But if we don't do something about it, we are going to have people that own buildings, that take pride in their buildings, be impacted by the people that don't. So I think we need to, you know, step forward and start addressing that, but let's do it the right way, and let's make sure that everyone is well-educated of what this ordinance entails.
That was my initial concern, Mr. Trujillo. And I think that if we look at it very carefully and make sure that legal is working with you on this, we need to get as much public input as we can from the people, in addition to, we need to contact the individuals who do own those buildings and tell them, you know, this is happening.
It's coming.
Exactly. It's a reality. Because we are looking at it. I did not want to put it on the agenda initially, as you know, because I just feel it's still not ready.
And this is nothing against, I think Levi has taken that challenge on, and we need to help him. We need to help him get there.
And I commend you for that, but we're still not there. We need to find two or three. So, I've got the, okay, did you have a question?
I just had, so we will see it this year?
Yes.
Yes, of course. Hopefully before the end of the year.
Right.
I hope so. Okay. Now, what is the pleasure of the floor? Shall we remove this? Okay, we'll remove it till, okay. Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Now, before we continue, I want to make a statement to the council. There's been three times that specific counselor has actually, when he's speaking and other individuals seem to be recognized, has recognized him on my behalf. It is the duty and the responsibility of the chair to recognize these individuals. So if somebody needs to be recognized out here, whether it be the city attorney, whether it be the speaker, or whether it be our city manager or clerk, please defer the floor back to me, and I will go ahead and recognize the individuals. Okay? Let's continue.
Any clarification on that?
Do you need clarification?
Yeah.
You don't have done that three times, Counselor Howell.
Who have I done it to?
Oh, you just did that to Mr. Trujillo. He asked for the floor. You were supposed to give me back the floor, and then I--
No, I still had the floor, because he was answering my question.
But you recognized Mr. Trujillo, but he had asked prior to you. You have to give me the floor, so I recognize his--
I asked the question about--
Are you the chair?
Madam Mayor, I asked the question of the staffing, and then Mr. Trujillo was answering my question.
He had asked--
And then I still had the floor. We were discussing.
No, he asked for the floor prior to you, but I gave you the floor out of respect. So then, you were supposed to give the floor back to me, so I could recognize Mr. Trujillo. This is the third time you've done this, Counselor Howell. Just follow the process. Okay, let's continue.
I disagree with that, but--
Yes, you do. You always disagree. Continue, Mr. Trujillo.
Okay. Number four is Resolution 17-39 in support of the biannual memorandum of understanding, or Main Street. We do this every year, and we have to enter it to an MOU with the state of Main Street, and that's what this MOU is for.
Okay. And who's presenting?
I am.
Okay. Continue.
Sorry, I pretty much--
I didn't do some vision. Okay, got you. Okay, questions, comments?
I just, thank you. I don't have a problem with any of it, except line two of the first whereas. It says historic commercial. Now, when I saw the, I think it's supposed to be core consisting, but when I read it, it was like core reconsisting. I didn't really know what the word is. So what is that supposed to say? Is it supposed to be the economic redevelopment of its historic commercial core consisting of three historic downtown commercial districts?
I think it might have, it should have been "or," right, or what?
I think it's supposed to be core.
Core.
Core, but it's--
It's core space.
Space between core and consisting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Otherwise, it doesn't make any sense.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, Mr. Trujillo?
Okay.
I too have some concerns about the language on this and actually spelling. So I made a lot of changes to it. I'm not certain if those changes actually occurred, but it would be nice if we would have, when they're preparing these, when they bring them to us, if there's changes that I've made, that they correct those changes before.
Okay.
Any other questions? What is the pleasure of the council?
Consent.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Robert Alchuleto is supposed to be here tonight, but he's at a funeral, the death of one of his family members. I'm going to give you a copy of the ICIP.
Thank you. It was rough reading that sideways on my computer.
Okay. So if you look at the list, it's a safe list that Mayor and Council approved last year. The only difference, and if you go down three pages, I think there's a highlighted area there where we bumped public facilities upgrade improvements to number five. Now, when you look at the format that this is in, it's not that easy to say, okay, we're going to bump, the way this whole thing was developed, we're going to bump Public Works to number five, and you'll see it up here in the top five. The other thing that Robert is working with DFA on and some other groups, they are going to redo this whole format, and we're going to request that possibly that they use Vegas as a pilot and help us put together a better understanding, clearer understanding of the ICIP projects, because the way it is right now, to go in there and bump projects up and bump, bump projects down, we can't do it. It's a way they set up that whole system.
Let me tell you, oh, Mr. Trujillo, why they did that. I was working with DFA when we initiated the ICIP plan. One of the reasons we did that was so municipalities would not just arbitrarily--
I got you.
--bump something up without the council and governing board--
That makes sense.
That was the reason. And that makes sense, because a lot of that was actually occurring. They will come to the council with a designated plan. It was not called an ICIP plan at the time. So then DFA came up with a process of why we initiated this way. So essentially, I don't see how they're going to be able to amend this unless they go through an actual process at their level. But even if that, the actual format is going to be consistent or must be consistent with the actual resolution or statute, because we cannot continue to allow, and that was one of the issues at DFA that had occurred in the past, that you had a political drive by two or three counselors who would approve whatever was necessary in an open meeting, but they'd get together and secretly bump one of the projects up and put some of the face money or other monies into those projects which were not on the top 10. So that's why we came up with that actual policy. Now, if we amend it, it's still going to be difficult, because I don't want to see amended and have administration determine without coming to the council what changes were made. I think it's necessary that the council, if they approve a certain ICIP plan and that's a top 10, we adhere to that, unless extenuating circumstances or other issues surface, you know. We can't do that to the governing bodies.
So, Madam, you're correct. And members of the council, we don't change this unless it's approved by Mayor and Council.
Exactly.
What we do is we pass it on, and you choose what you feel are the priority projects. The one project, the reason we did the Public Works Department building, if you've been back there, it's a mess. We're losing the roofing, we're losing the structural damages, and in order for us to get funding for it, you have to be in the top 10 for us to qualify.
Okay. Now, the other thing we have to look at, and I understand that, is the issue of an emergency.
Right.
We can also prioritize that.
Right. But we've left everything the way Mayor and Council chose last year. Wastewater collection system, that's our infrastructure of our wastewater. Public safety vehicles, that's still going to be top of our list, top five. The raw water conveyance system, that's the main transmission line that brings water into the reservoirs. The mobile data communication, that's the hotspots that we want to be able to get funding for to provide Wi-Fi to our officers. And then the gas transmission line replacement. So everything that's here is the way you approved last year. This is a 30-day session. We've pretty much been told that it's going to be a budget 30-day session, so I don't know if there's going to be money for a lot of this.
Well, thanks. Now, how are you going to bring this back to the council on the infrastructure?
As far as--
For approval of moving that item to number five?
I guess Mayor and Council could vote on that tonight.
No, we can't vote on anything tonight. Tonight's a consent agenda item.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You're correct.
So you'd have to bring it back at the next meeting--
And I'll bring up that--
--resolution?
Yes.
And then I'd also like you to attach a letter from DFA saying that that has been discussed, and that item has also been moved up in the DFA once the resolution has been passed by the council.
Right.
Okay. That's fair.
Just a question, and maybe you can answer it, Madam Mayor, is what happens to the other items that--
They drop down accordingly.
They just drop down accordingly, because we have like three or four items that are all listed as a number five ranking.
Yeah. Okay. And then if that's going to be the top priority, number five, then that--
That would be the first number five, and then the rest will--
And then you'd go down. Just drop down. Exactly. That's exactly how they handle.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Trujillo, are we clear?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Counselor Howell? Okay.
So will this be a separate agenda item?
I would not recommend we put it on the consent, but we leave it there, bring it on--
Or discussion.
--the business item. At that point in time, hopefully, everything will be cleared up with DFA--
Right.
--with the ICIP process, and so we'll remove this from the original business item.
Okay, great.
And also, I think the next meeting, no, we don't have a resolution to it, so this is-- Okay.
Okay. Are we clear?
Yes. Okay, so the next nine items are going to be, Mayor Gilvery, she'll be here for a while.
Well, I'm going to have to go.
How are you this evening?
I'm good. Mayor, counselors, Mr. Manager. My first item I'd like to present to the council is a request to consider awarding to WH Pacific Engineering Services for design, bidding, and construction administration of Phase One, and only of Phase One, for the Mills Utility Building renovation project.
Questions, comments?
I--
Oh.
Sorry. It's okay. I went ahead and tasked the engineer with providing cost estimates for three phases. Phase one is the minimum that we need to do to make that building safe and a customer service building, so that it's set up for cashiers, it's set up for billing, it's set up for customers, and that it will be a safe environment with cameras, security doors, and proper HVAC systems. And Phase two would be an additional area, a back office area that is not required for the number of employees that'll be moving over there. So that's why that's Phase two. It's not necessary at this time. And Phase three is a potential to be able to move in municipal court. So the three different phases are included in this, although, again, I'm requesting that we only move forward with Phase one. Phase one is $54,000 for planning, design, bidding, and construction phase services on a $392,500 construction. That's for 2,000 square feet. Again, that's the primary area, so that's going to have more equipment installed. Again, cameras, HVAC system, security glass, security doors. The second phase that will potentially bring back to the council in the future is the back office area. That's $270,000, because it is not as much work and equipment that'll be modified. And the third phase is estimated to be about $730,000 for a 2,300-square-foot courthouse area, which would include offices and the judges' chambers. So again, I'd like to present to the council and request permission to move forward on only Phase one.
I have a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Where is the roof repair in these phases?
So, Counselor, Madam Mayor, the roof was damaged during the hail. Our insurance company is handling the assessment and the repair of that, so that will not be included. That'll actually be pulled out of this project.
That will be the fund.
We had anticipated doing some repair work prior to the damage, but now that the hail has caused some damage, we're going to go through our insurance company on that.
Okay. And then our little explanation here says this cost will be paid out of multiple line item numbers.
Yes.
Line item numbers in general fund and where?
So they'll all be paid out of utilities. Since water, wastewater, gas, solid waste are all going to be benefit from this, that each one of the divisions will be paying for it. In this case, you'll see on the agenda request, utilities, admin, water, or wastewater, solid waste, and water. I had, forgot to budget under gas, so gas will take a larger portion once we move into construction, to ensure that all divisions are paying for this proportionately. But it'll all come out of utilities.
Thank you.
And, oh, and it is budgeted.
Counselor Howell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Gilvery, this Phase One building, is that one near the golf course?
It, yes, Counselor, it is the formerly known as the State Police Building across the street from--
Across the street.
Oh, okay. That's the state building?
Yes.
Because the picture in there looked like it-- Because the picture in there looked like it was the golf area.
It'll be the formerly, the state police building.
Then the one across is the second. Now we have one up there.
Okay, all right. That's the building we're talking about.
And it'll only be the first portion of that building that we, what we need.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I have a question. Miss Mayor, and I'm sure you know this. I had raised the question of the city paying, we had already paid for Phase One of this building.
Yes.
For tech engineering services. So what is different?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, I did go back and look at it with the assistance of the Finance Director, and there is a lot of difference. That original project we were looking at was doing minimal. There was going to be really no modification to the facility. We were going to use the existing lobby and build off of it, and it was not really designed very well to be able to maximize the use of that facility for billing, customer service, and cashiers. By relocating some of the offices and increasing or adding in the safety glass to that front wall as you come in, it actually allows us to create a more safe environment for the staff. And it is a different design and a different scope than what the previous scope was with...
And how many units for customer service are going to have available?
There will be for cashiers. We'll have three cashiers as opposed to two. We will have a separate area for billing, which will have a locked door so that customers and employees will be safe behind that area. And we'll have a larger open lobby area so that customers have room to sit and wait comfortably while they're needing assistance from cashiers, customer service, or billing.
Okay. And on the first initial design phase, what was the total cost?
I believe we had three different cost estimates. $18,000, $15,000 to $18,000 for some reason comes to mind, and then there was a large discrepancy.
The actual project cost?
The project cost, Madam Mayor, I'd have to go back and look. I can't do that.
Because I believe the total was what, something like, was it $50,000, $40,000?
And that's where I believe we weren't going to do much of any modification, other than putting up a wall.
See, this is at what, $54,000, correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
The other one was in the 40s, possibly $50,000. So, we could not have captured that in the first design phase. I'm concerned about the spending of the money on this one.
Absolutely. And I understand. I remember from the first one that the engineering phase cost was a large variation from one engineer to another. And so I went back and looked at the scope today and it wasn't very clear. The scope was not very clear at all. This one, as you can see, is much more defined with the 23 different individual tasks.
Okay. I'm going to make a recommendation that we not put this on a consent agenda and have Ms. Gilmour come back to us with the actual cost and give us a complete breakdown on the varying costs of the first one.
Okay.
And the second one, because we are paying twice for this. This should not have happened. So you're going, I would expect that you explain in detail what the varying differences is between the first one that we paid for and this one that you're asking us to... Is that okay with the council?
May I ask this one?
Absolutely.
What will happen to the old building once you move into the new one?
The old building, the current building we're occupying will continue to be a service center, so that's where we'll have the construction and maintenance crews and service crews for gas and water will still operate out of there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay. Go ahead and we'll remove this and put it back as the business item, I would recommend. And then go ahead and bring us all the information when you approach me. And I want a clear and comprehensive analysis of both.
Yes.
Okay, number seven, award and request for proposals 2018-01 for Engineering Services for Water Treatment Plant to Molson and Corbin Associates and Bohannon and Houston, and enter into agreements.
Thank you, counselors, Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager. In July, we submit, we advertised for a proposal for Engineering Services to assist the Water Treatment Plant with potential projects. We had five proposers. Of those five proposers, Molson Corbin and Bohannon Houston ranked the highest. And I am requesting to the council consider awarding to both Molson Corbin and Bohannon Houston this proposal. And any future specific projects that are over the financial threshold will be brought back to council for approval. If they're minor projects, we'll continue to follow our procurement process.
Questions, comments?
Question, Senator?
I have a question. You will be round robin both of the proposals.
We do go, and some of the projects have already been started. If there's already a project existing and an engineer has already designed it and has taken it up to construction, they'll continue with that particular project. If it's a brand-new project, then we'll go back and forth between the engineers.
And if they're already started, which is obviously what's occurred here...
Under previous contracts.
So it'll be a continuation of their contract?
It'll be a continuation of their task orders, but I have to, the contracts have expired...
Can you have to be careful how you're going to tie that in, Maria?
Yes, ma'am.
Because then it could be a violation of procurement. So, again, I have a concern about this one. I would probably have you sit down with our Finance Director and her senior attorney, who is our Finance Director, actually, she's the expert in procurement, and make certain that there's not going to be a conflict in issue or a violation of procurement because of a continuation of the project. That happened in the city about four or five years ago, and I actually stopped it because there was an open bid that started at $150,000 and ran close to $100,000. And we awarded only $150,000. So I would definitely suggest that you speak with your guys.
And in this case, I can say I currently have zero projects being engineered at the Water Treatment Plant. I have one project, which is the treatment equipment, the microchlor disinfectant equipment, which is being installed by Alpha Southwest. Other than that, I have no current projects underwater Treatment Plant. That was a general statement I made specifically to the Water Treatment Plant. We have potential for a new project with the clarifier cover. And I believe that's the only one that's currently on the this year's budget.
But Molson Corbin doesn't have any projects at this point in time that you're working on.
No. Molson Corbin does not have one.
Which one is it that has a continuation?
They don't.
Not on the Water Treatment Plant.
Okay, but you did state...
Yes. For instance, the raw water conveyance, Bradner, those are continuing projects.
Okay, but those continuing projects will tie into this proposal?
Not to this one.
Not to this one at all?
No, ma'am.
Guaranteed?
Correct.
Yeah, this is the plant.
This is just the Water Treatment Plant?
Okay, so let me ask you a question. What projects do other engineering firms have that are currently open and that are going to have a continuation on some of this...
At the Water Treatment Plant?
Regardless, on any of your projects.
Okay. At the Water Treatment Plant, I have none.
Okay.
I do have Solder Miller that's working on the Bradner inlet.
Okay.
And we do have AECOM that's working on Bradner and Peterson. We do have Cinder Road that's under construction. We do have, what other ones in the construction? Story is under construction right now, the repair of the Story MDF line. Which one else do we have?
They don't tie into this.
They're not for the Water Treatment Plant.
Okay. Anything in the future, and I'm going to make this statement, that is tied in to a continuing project must have full approval by the council, and they need to be crystal clear as to that process. But I also want you to run it through our procurement expert, which is our Finance Director, and ensure that there's not going to be a conflict. So therefore, you two will have to, I'm sorry, Ms. Gago, sit here and answer to the council on a continuation of a project. I have a lot of concerns about that, because I don't want to see that happen again. Okay? Fair enough? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So will that be a separate item or...
This is separate, and this is brand-new, correct? There's no items that are going to be tied into this?
Like I said, I do not have any current Water Treatment Plant projects that are currently underway that would be under this proposal.
Okay. Okay, now, what is the pleasure of the council?
That it doesn't tie into anything else, something we can do with consent.
Then that's fair. Okay, Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gilmour. I know that was excruciating, but it's okay. We've got to go through this.
So, award request for bid 2018-07 for the City of Las Vegas FEMA flood repair project to New Image Construction. Am I wrong?
Did we jump someone the...
I don't know.
2018-08 for Engineering Services for the Raw Water Transmission Line.
Number seven.
We're number seven.
We're number eight.
No, we're in number eight now.
Yeah. We're in number eight.
Yeah, we just went through the Water Treatment Plant to Molson Corbin and 97.
So we're in number eight.
I made mistakes.
So it's seven?
Yeah.
It's eight. Seven has been consented.
Yeah, seven is a consent. We actually removed number six. That's the one we removed. So there was, and then we removed number five. We removed two items.
It's the FEMA.
One for...
So the next one is number eight for the FEMA flood.
Okay. Number eight. Are we correct? Is everybody on the point here? Okay, continue.
So, request to award bid to New Image on August 6th. We advertised for the repairs to city facilities, the diversion, some pipe crossings, the skating pond, the Sed Basin. We had two bidders, New Image Construction and TRC Construction. And the engineer did the bid evaluation and recommended that because one of the bidders had not done their calculations properly, that they be considered a non-responsive bidder. And even if they were considered a bidder, New Image Construction's cost were, base bid costs were lower.
Questions, comments?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I was looking at the bid sheet.
Yes.
And TRC Construction on Lot 2 bid $483,116.40.
Yes.
New Image Construction bid $193,300. That's a huge difference. Can you remind us what Lot 2 had in there?
So Lot 2 is, that's the raw water pipe bridge structure, so that's the pipeline that crosses the Guiness River up nearby, near the diversion. There's a crack in the concrete around the piping, potential damage to the piping that will need to be addressed.
Okay. Did anybody ask, you know, I mean, to me, that's like a $300,000, $300,000 difference?
They had, and that was one of the questions from the engineer, was why their price was so different. So there is an alternative on that. And the alternative for Site 2 is, was the contractor inadvertently included that or did include that, which we have to take the price that the bidder puts on the paper, and they included the alternate in with the base bid.
Okay, so TRC included the alternate along with the base bid, and that's why it was higher.
That's why their price was so much higher.
Okay, because that kind of surprised me.
Yes. That was one of the things the engineer noticed right away, but they went back and that's, in the engineer's statement, they stated there was a discrepancy with TRC's bid.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Howell? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Gilmour, New Image Construction, have they done a lot of jobs for us?
They have. Yes, Counselor.
When's the most recent one?
Towel Street Crossing. They fixed the leak that we had on the Towel line.
How was the job?
Very, very well done. We've had, we've been able to be online, though we haven't been able to be online for several years. It was crossing the river, so I have had some comments about how it's muddy in the area that they had to excavate, but it was right there at a, at a river in a seque. So, once it dries up, hopefully, we can go in and do a little landscaping there. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question. What was the GRT paid by this contractor?
They will pay, and it is, let me see. The base bid does not include GRT, but GRT is paid.
What is the GRT that he's paid?
So gross tax receipts not included. They will pay the Las Vegas rate.
Okay, because I know in the past, I've had concerns, because he comes in with the base bid of San Jose in the area of his sites, which is at 6% within the county, and it's unfair because he's doing business here.
He has to do the rate, and when our engineers get his invoice, that's one of the things they look at, is the tax rate and how much he'll be paying. They are required to pay the rate of where they're doing the work. The engineer and the contractor. So the engineer, if they're designing it in Albuquerque, they do Albuquerque's rate, but if they're designing it here, they'll do, so when they're observing and they're doing all the work associated with it, the engineer will be paying the Las Vegas rate.
Okay, also, on the alternate bid, the bid was exceptionally low. And a lot of times, you'll have a bidder come in at a very low rate, and then they kill us with the alternate bidding.
Right.
Who's going to be, are you going to monitor that?
So we will monitor that. We may not do the alternates if, for two reasons. One is how much I've budgeted for, and as well as FEMA, Department of Homeland Security is paying for this. They're paying for 75% of it. The city will pay for 12.5%, and the state will pay for 12.5%. So we'll be monitoring that.
All federal guidelines have been met on this.
Yes. And we've actually already received money from FEMA that's in for this project.
Okay. And any other questions? What is the pleasure of the council?
Consent. I believe that you had brought up the GRT question before.
And that's one of the things that I have my engineer, remind my engineers when they receive the invoices.
We need to ensure that any contractor or business that we give business to does pay our local GRT. It's killing us, and it's killed us in the past, and I've embarrassed you, Mark.
All right, number nine, award request for proposals 2018-08 for Engineering Services for Raw Water Transmission Lines to WH Pacific and Molson and Corbin, and enter into agreements.
Counselors, Mayor, Mr. Manager, requesting to award this proposal. We did go out on August 6th and advertise for Engineering Services all the way through construction for the raw water transmission lines. And the two companies that ranked the highest were WH Pacific and Molson Corbin. This is the raw water transmission line between the diversion and Peterson, so it's a very long section of line. It's not, anything that's done there will most likely be done in phases over a, over several year period.
Questions, comments? Okay. Consent agenda?
Number 10, award request for proposals 2018-09 for Engineering Services for Taylor Wellfields Planning, Design, and Construction to Molson and Corbin and Associates.
Counselors, Mayor, Mr. Manager, on August 6th, we did go out to advertise, and we opened proposals on the 29th for Engineering Services for the Taylor Wellfield. We did have three proposers, and Molson Corbin did rank the highest in the evaluation for the Taylor Wellfield work. Requesting to provide or award to Molson Corbin these Engineering Services.
Questions, Counselor Howell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We haven't discussed Taylor Wells for a long time. How did this come up now, and what was the reason for us bringing Taylor Wells up?
Thank you, Counselor. One of the reasons why we brought this up was Taylor Well floor pump has been having some issues. And so it's based on not only GGI's assessment of the timeframe and the age, and Molson Corbin is, we're going to need to look at rehabilitating Taylor Wellfield Number Four, the pump and the motor. We've had some issues with it. So we're looking at that as well as electrical improvements, some security improvements there.
Because it's been a long time since we thought Taylor Wells...
Yes. We haven't used the wellfield a lot in the last few years, but we're trying, we want to maintain it so that it's ready to go when we need it. So it needs to stay operational. As a matter of fact, I'm currently working with my Water Treatment Plant Manager for a regular operation cycle, so we can continue to make sure that everything is ready to run at any cost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what's the pleasure of the council?
Consent.
Consent? Okay, consent.
Okay, number eleven. Award request proposal 2018 dash eleven for engineering services for leak detection, planning, design, and construction to Moleskine Corbin and Associates, and also to OCAM engineers, an entry into agreements.
Mayor, counselors, Mr. Manager, on August twenty-first, we did advertise, and we opened proposals on September twelfth for leak detection, planning, design, and the construction engineering services. We had two proposers of Moleskine Corbin and OCAM engineers, and requesting to award to both Moleskine Corbin and OCAM.
Questions, or Counselor Howell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Gilbert, what have we been using to identify leaks in the past?
A few years ago, we did have a subcontractor come out and do some sonar work, some assessment of our lines, interviewed staff to kind of figure out where we had the potential for, for leaks, and then they did an evaluation and provided us with a list. So we have a current list from about four years ago of leaks that we're working on, and every few years, we need to go back and reassess that for new leaks and new issues.
So currently, we don't have a leak detection equipment for, for the city?
We do have a system that will allow us to walk around with a cone and try and listen for leaks, but you have to kind of know what you're starting with before you can get there. And we're looking at hiring, having an engineer help us, and we'll be hiring a professional who can go around with much better equipment to be able to locate these leaks.
We're looking for a high-tech?
Yes.
Equipment?
Yes.
Get away from me.
Yeah, the, the other one is a, is a headphones, and you stand there with a cone.
Madam Mayor, just to comment, I'm so happy to see this, because I have constituents that have found leaks everywhere, and so I'm very happy that we're going to have technology help us find those leaks, because I get consistent calls from people, and I already recognize their voices when they call me up. It's like, Barbara, that pothole is growing with that leak, and I'm like, okay, I'll, I'll call somebody.
And it does allow us to prioritize a list and go out and make repairs. Sometimes it takes a while. For instance, the last time we did this, that's when the story leak was found, and we're just now fixing that leak. So sometimes it, it's great information that goes with having to plan and design the repairs.
I'm very happy that this is being done.
Any other questions? Consent?
Number twelve. Award request for proposals 2018 dash twelve for engineering services for the effluent planning, design, construction to Moleskine Corbin and Associates.
Counselors, Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager, requesting to award proposal for the effluent system planning, design, and construction to Moleskine Corbin. On August twenty-first, we did go out to advertise. We opened on September twelfth, and we had three proposers, Moleskine, three posers. Moleskine Corbin, Sauter Miller, and Bahannon Houston, and Moleskine Corbin did, and ranked the highest, and this will allow us to, to work on the effluent system, improve the effluent system, get effluent to additional city parks and city facilities. We recently resubmitted our permit request for effluent discharge to include Hannah Park and a few other areas, so that we'd be able to move forward with those, and this, this will allow us to engineer those.
Questions, comments?
She answered my question.
Hannah Park.
What is the pleasure, Counselor? You're almost there.
All right, done. Number thirteen, award bid 2018 dash thirteen to acquire snow removal equipment, and then we're done. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before she leaves?
Yes.
The hot seat there. Is there any way that we could have a matrix maybe done so that we know which projects are being done? I think you put that in that big sheet paper, but if we could just have like something simple, like, you know, leaks, Moleskine Corbin, or, you know, Sauter Miller, or whatever, so that we can keep better track of?
Projects and engineers?
Of just who is doing which project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it's hard to keep track, and, you know, I would like to know.
I can do that. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Gilbert. Ms. Jantry, how's it going this evening?
Good, good, good.
Good, good.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Bid 2018 thirteen to acquire snow removal equipment for the City of Las Vegas Municipal Airport was opened on September the twelfth, twenty seventeen. Two offers submitted a bid, which MB Companies was the lowest bid. The offer was met all specifications and requirements per FFA criteria, and the bid amount was for four hundred and fifty-two thousand.
Okay, and is that gentleman here this evening?
Excuse me?
Is he here this evening?
No, but I do have a representative from WH Pacific. If there are any questions need to be attained.
Oh, okay, thank you. Questions, comments?
I guess I'd like to know, Madam Mayor, what exactly does snow removal entail that it costs so much?
Snow removal?
Or is it just equipment?
It's a piece of equipment, yes, that has to meet special specifications due to the runways for airports.
Okay.
And the equipment will only be utilized for airport only, and that's based on FAA requirements.
And will whoever is going to be doing the snow removal be trained on how to use that equipment?
Correct. They will be trained. The airport manager and the airport technician will be trained, and they are also currently enrolled to take their CD out, their Class A, through the workforce solutions that the city did, is working with them.
Okay, and do we have a place to store that piece of equipment so that it doesn't expose to the elements all the time?
We have the SRE, SRE building up at the airport, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Odiari?
How much traffic do you have when the, you know, planes coming in and coming out? Is that a lot of?
Well, we do average, and what's based more now is an emergency at the hospital.
Yes.
And that's another, and actually a safety issue here for us. And actually, we do have, we average, either winter months, approximately four, four planes that come in a day, and for safety reasons, regardless of a plane that comes in or not, we have to have the runways cleared.
I have a question. Okay, on the, and this is MB, MB Companies who are beginning bid, correct?
Correct.
On the actual bid, if you look at the base bid and the additive alternate, you will see that the additive alternate is at four hundred thousand. Why was that number not included in the actual base bid versus the alternate?
The alternate was not included until after the fact, when FFA reviewed the requirements of the equipment itself, so they required that we added addition, the alternate, the non-stable rotary boom, boom to it.
Okay, and of this money, how much is going to be paid by the city?
So twenty-eight thousand is going to come out of the state aviation, twenty-eight thousand out of the City of Las Vegas general fund, and five oh six out of the FFA, FAA State Aviation Act.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? What is the pleasure, Counselor? Thank you very much. Before we adjourn, I'd like to have Ms. Kreskes, could you remind everybody of next meeting?
Absolutely. Yes, we have our meeting on Monday, sixteenth. I don't know if anybody saw the email that went out, and the reason being is that myself and my deputy clerk will be attending a city clerk training, so I'll be, she'll be gone Tuesday at the training, and I'll be here on Tuesday afternoon. So that's the reason that we changed it to Monday.
And the training is?
In Albuquerque or?
Albuquerque.
What time, same time, correct?
Around same time.
When did you send the email?
It's been a while. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought you just.
No, no, no. And the meetings are the same time, at Houdin's five thirty, and going immediately.
Thank you very much. Okay, do we have need for executive?
Please, you have need for executive to briefly discuss pending litigation in Southwest Capitol, but it's just a north of that.
Okay.
No action, I think, just.
Okay, just discussion.
Yeah, gotcha.
Please, do we have a motion for an executive?
Madam Mayor, I think it was so moved on.
I know.
Madam Mayor, I move that we go.
He's making a motion. He's been advised, Counselor Casey, for a while now.
I am?
Yes, you have, openly. You need to make a motion. Okay, go ahead. Counselor Howell, tonight is your night. Go ahead.
I refuse to make the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters subject to the attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatening pending litigation in which the City of Las Vegas may be considered a participant, estimated by section ten dash fifteen dash one H seven on the Mexico Open Meetings Act nineteen seventy-eight and NSA.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Odiari Junior?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Odiari Junior, and Madam Mayor, motion taken.